Are we set? Okay. Well, I probably had the quickest Pla meeting this past Tuesday and I'm not sure if I'll pass the record today, but I know there are all smiles. But this is the Planning Land Use Committee, a special meeting, Thursday, November 6th. And I want to thank my colleague, Jack Weiss, for being here this morning. And Roberto, why don't we just dig in and get started?
Sure, Councilman. Item one is a report from the CIO, Building and Safety, and a draft ordinance relative to the off-site sign inspection program and a fee analysis.
Okay, if we can have the staff come to the table, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lily Fong. This committee had requested that the CIO conduct a fee analysis for the Department of Building and Safety's proposed fee schedule for a billboard inspection program called the Off-Site Sign Structure Periodic Inspection Program. The department had recommended two fees. The first fee was $186 per sign for verification only. The second fee was originally proposed for $342 for verification with research, but I've been advised that the department will comment upon a reduction in that fee to $338. These calculations are based upon direct costs or salaries for five resolution positions, indirect costs or related costs based upon the controller's cost allocation plan 30, and the related expenses, which includes items such as mileage and cellphone usage. The program will take approximately 2.7 years, and the estimated cost to the general fund is $1,871,594. The projected revenue is $1,860,000. Approval of these recommendations will result in a potential shortfall of $11,594. However, we recommend approval of the positions and the fee schedule in order for the department to implement the billboard inspection program.
Can you just repeat that last part because I didn't quite hear you?
We recommend approval of the department's fee schedule and their five resolution authority positions in order to allow the department to implement its billboard inspection program.
Okay. So, thank you.
I'm here supporting the CIO's report. The CIO's report, as you probably have observed, is very extensive. It has been very, very heavily coordinated with Building and Safety and City Attorney's Office, and we are here supporting the report.
Great, thank you. What we can do is we'll go through the speaker cards and then we'll continue with questions. But I want to make sure we hear from the public comment first. So we have two cards in front of us. We have Kristen Lanner, please come on up, and Bill Crabtree.
Bill, actually, isn't here.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Lanner. I'm from Sorrel Associates, and I'm representing Van Wagner. Bill Crabtree has not joined us yet. Hopefully, he will get here, but I wanted to tell you, first of all, that we are very supportive of the action this committee is taking today. Van Wagner is another sign company that is out there, and we look forward to the implementation of this program. We believe the inspection and inventory is the first step to a more thorough understanding of what's really going on in the sign industry out there. Van Wagner has worked in many different jurisdictions on these exact issues and is seen as a company who is willing to partner with municipalities to bring about positive change for all involved. We want to be at the table as you look at these larger issues. We believe a land use-based system with GIS mapping in your current ZEMIS system will provide the public and your offices with the immediate access to information when you start getting those calls in your offices about billboards. In addition, it will also make illegal signage a thing of the past because the reality will be that the computer system will provide you with the exact information you need to understand where legal and illegal billboards and signs are. So we are very supportive of the enforcement program and being put into place today, and we look forward to working with the city moving forward on the larger issues at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, yes.
Can I ask a question in the middle of this public comment? Could you just cut me?
Well, that's the end of it because there are only two cards, so we're there.
Oh, we're there. Two questions for either or both of you. The first, I mean, I had to look at the CIO report because I've been telling people that I wrote this law five or six years ago because it's been so long, I'd forgotten. And the law, in fact, was adopted or enacted in February of 2002. So I've been waiting over six years for this moment, but it looks like we really are on a track to get this done. And it'll go from this committee to, I guess it has to go to personnel. I was formed by Mr. Laura and Budget and Finance, and then to council, and then that should give you the opportunity to start hiring up and doing the work in the beginning of the year.
That's correct, Councilman.
So I guess the bottom line is better very, 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 very late than never, and I'm glad that you're doing the work. Two questions for you. The first is, when I wrote the law, one thing I wanted to, I wanted to do what we're doing, which is I wanted to have dedicated billboard inspectors who would go out, do the research internally, look at whatever documents were provided by billboard companies, would kind of do what you've done here with your two-tiered fee schedule in that it's not that it's a presumption against folks who don't have documents, but it's harder work when they don't have their documents. So I want to do that and then send those folks out in the field, and they're going to do that. The other thing I wanted to do was provide some indication on the actual billboards themselves so that members of the public who had a question about a billboard could call Building and Safety, and each sign would have a number or some sort of identification that would be, you know, other than saying Ham at the corner of Pico and Robertson. What is there in the program that will enable members of the public to know what billboard they're looking at?
Councilmember, excellent point, and I am very supportive of that. In the view of the, all the discussion which has been going on in the billboards, I've been having a heightened degree of awareness. From my understanding, currently, there is not anything in the program which puts a direct identification on the billboards. I like, I am going to turn to my staff. I like what is, when I was in San Francisco, each billboard or sign had a number on it, which had the, I'm sorry. It will be catalogued, but it will be catalogued and the information will be available. However, I like the program that I saw in San Francisco, which each one of the billboards, there's a number on it, the permit number or a corresponding number or catalog number that people can go look at it. And I think that is something that if it is your direction, we should follow that so that to, on the person who walks by a billboard can see a catalog number.
I thought it was my direction seven years ago, but, to do that. But nonetheless, you, am I correct that your department is going to inspect physically each sign?
Yes.
Okay, so if they're going to inspect physically each sign, it gives the department the opportunity, it seems to me, to affix something to the sign or the signpost, maybe not always, but some of the time, or direct that something be affixed that will be a clear indication to the public of, you know, both identification and serving to show that it's been inspected.
Yes, perhaps the, perhaps what would be more appropriate that we force or mandate that the billboard company put a number or something on there because if the department affixes it on there, it would be removable by somebody as opposed to...
Well, fair enough. Why don't I do this, which is, don't make it up off the top of your head. Fortunately or otherwise, we still have time before the programs can actually be implemented. Hopefully, that's not too much time. But before we get to council, if you all could agree on the precise way that each billboard, it's like, it's like antelopes in the wild, you know, you tag their ears or something, right? Just the appropriate way that you'll tag each one, yeah. And is that anti-anelope? Have I stepped in another political minefield already?
About two past, okay.
Yeah, in the wild, yeah. If you could come up with a plan before it comes to council, I thought that was part of the original direction, it doesn't matter now. And just so that there's something that is uniform, that is easily recognizable by the public, and that indicates that you all have been around.
Okay, I just was handed notes, and again, as you know, the billboard has had so many different angles, which says we have printed thousands of stickers that we will put on each billboard that we inspect. I think, I think your direction is right on, allow the staff to go back and look at it, see what is in the current ordinance, whether it needs to be enhanced, and we will report back to you during the council meeting.
Well, and it sounds like, well, it's a big department, and I'm glad that folks are already working on it. Maybe you just give a full report on that when we get to council so that people will understand that element of the program, which I'm glad that I wasn't completely mistaken that I had requested this a while ago. Two more items.
Yes.
One involves the database.
Yes.
All right. If a member of the public wants to go online and research the database now, do they have to be a computer geek, or can they just figure this stuff out?
They should be, our goal is that they should be, our goal is that they can figure it out easily. All the data on the building and safety permits and inspection activity is on the computer programs of the, and it can be done over the internet. And I am not a computer geek, as a matter of fact, more like I'm a computer idiot. I will test it myself, so if I can figure it out, probably any job public can figure it out.
All right, I think it's important that that database be searchable and accessible to the public. Is there any problem now with respect to the public not being able to get data? Because this is, this is a perennial. Sometimes when my office asks, we're told that you can't do it, or that the city attorney has advised you not to do it. Is there any issue with respect to that at all?
The information is public information and is available to any member of public upon request.
So, and Mr. Blau, is that correct? So I'll never ever hear again from anybody, from a reporter, from a member of the public, from a member of staff, that there's ever any impediment to getting access to any of this information?
My understanding is that the information is searchable in...
Can you just introduce yourself before?
I'm Steve Blau from the City Attorney's Office. My understanding is that the information is accessible through a website maintained by Building and Safety. I've used the website before. You need an address. Once you plug that address in, all of the permit information and all of the inspection activity on that address is available through the public, to the public through that website. My understanding is that the inspection activities and the permit information concerning all the billboards will be available through, through the department's website.
Both information, both information that the city maintains, but also information provided by the billboard companies?
All of the inspection information.
And what about the information provided by the billboard companies?
There are a host of contracts and leases that the city is maintaining that was obtained through other litigation. That information would not be available on the website. What would be available are the permits that are issued and the inspections that Building and Safety has done to determine whether or not the building, the structures are in compliance with the permits.
Now, I thought that the billboard companies were providing the city with data.
They have. In some instances, we have permit, from my understanding, I have to speak with some from Building and Safety, but my understanding is that in, in many instances, they've provided us with permits. In other instances, they've provided us with the actual leases for some boards and other materials that show when and how the boards were constructed.
I mean, I mean, am I...
Councilman Jerry Burge with the City Attorney's Office. If I could make it clear that the City Attorney's Office has taken the position over and over again in court that we believe that all this information is public, and we are continuing to take that position.
Fine, but let's, let's back up for a second. The billboard companies were directed to and/or provided the city with data, correct?
Yes.
Okay, what data did they provide the city?
For more detail on that, you'd have to ask Building and Safety.
Okay, okay, all right, so we'll do that. What data did they provide the city?
I'm going to ask my staff to answer that. No, I want to, I want to come...
Okay, 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 so just answer the question. What data did, what data, no, no, guys, guys. What data did they provide the city?
Excuse me, Mr. Weiss, it's my understanding from Building and Safety, from what they've told me, the data includes the physical description, the location, the building permits, whether they've been applied for or whether they've been granted, the construction, and then all this data is put into their system called the Code Enforcement Inspection System, CEIS, where the public can access this information.
All right, and so is all of the data that they provided to the city online and accessible to the public?
Any and all information which is in possession of Building and Safety is public record.
No, 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 no. Can I just say something?
Please.
Okay. Answer my question.
Yes.
All right, okay.
Councilman, just, just let me clarify something for the record. The data that we currently have is based on what we currently have, period. The cataloging, which will be ongoing once the program is in effect, that will take all the data, and we'll be able to compile it in a very logistical way, and then from that point on, we'll be able to make it available on the website very plainly and very, you know, so anybody can access that.
That's good. But my issue is making sure that all the data that has been provided to the city by the billboard companies is being made public. And, and I must say, after having heard four different answers, I'm not certain that the answer is just dead-bang yes.
There is a bunch of data that has been provided. There have been Public Records Act requests for that data. Our office, the City Attorney's Office, has gone in in favor of those Public Records Act requests. There have been injunctions sought by some of the larger billboard companies. Our office has been successful at defeating those injunctions or applications for preliminary injunctions and producing data requested by the LA Weekly.
Well, let me put it this way, Councilman. Is there specific data you're looking for that they can get to you, or you just want to know what is provided?
My, my issue is that, first of all, the data is being provided in connection with either the ordinances or settlements or what have you, correct? Is it provided in connection with ordinances or with the settlements?
The data that Building and Safety has was provided in connection with the settlements.
Okay, that data needs to be made public completely, and what you're telling me is that it's not completely public, correct?
Some of it has been made public. The billboard companies have sought injunctions with respect to some of the other data. Our office would have to, and the city, of course, would have to comply with whatever orders are issued by a court.
Have any orders been issued by courts directing the city not to make any of the data public?
No.
Okay, so if there are no court orders, then all of the data should be made public. What am I not understanding about that?
If that data is requested...
No, 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 the data needs to be made public. We don't, that, so we, I mean, I just disagree respectfully with the City Attorney's Office's approach here. The data needs to be made public. It should be open, notorious, you can just, you know, plunk it down on the steps of City Hall East and say, here it is, have at it, or put it on his website. And apparently, you're not doing that.
Let me, let me frame it this way. Is there any data that shouldn't be public? If there isn't, why can't we disclose the data that the councilman was asking for? Is there any reason why we cannot present the data provided by the companies?
Let me answer that, Councilman, if I can try Jerry Burge again for the record. The, the issue here is that they, since they were provided in settlement agreements, there's an issue as to whether or not they are public, and that is what has been litigated. And we are litigating it, and we are taking a very strong position that they are public. And once we win that argument, which we expect to win, then the, the data will all be public. And of course, the data is going to be public through the inspection program that you are now attempting to adopt.
So is there any data we have that could be made public? Is that data being shown? Can we show the data that can be made public?
Absolutely.
Okay, so everything that can be made public will be shown?
Yes.
No, no, but I, I, I disagree with that. I think all the data could be made public right now, and what I'm being told is that you're not making some of the data public. For example...
Because, Councilman, we have motions pending in court. Federal motions.
On every single piece of data that you're not making public? You have a motion?
Yes. Otherwise, it has been made public.
Well, I'll tell you, given the history of this issue and the history of the lack of publication of the data, I'm not certain I'm ready to accept that right now because...
We're happy to meet with your, your office and show you...
Well, I mean, we've requested, and my office has requested time and time again, we've requested most recently, data by council district. Data by coun, what was it? Is council district address, what was it, Mr. Weiss?
Council district address, type of sign, I mean, all the...
Council district address, type of sign, it was not...
Oh, I think we're mixing things then, because we have 20-some, 25 lawsuits or whatever that would have certain sites, and Building and Safety may have a different database that doesn't include litigation. So, so it would be two different...
The locations of all signs are public, to the extent Building and Safety has locations for these signs and the type of signs.
No, 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 no. This is, I want you to understand this, okay? When you answer my questions from this point out, just direct, understand my questions are directed to data provided by billboard companies. My questions are not directed to information maintained or generated by Building and Safety. It's data generated by, provided by billboard companies. Their data, their data should be made public. That's what I'm saying, okay? I'm being very clear, and people keep dancing around it and saying, oh, the Building and Safety is going to do this. That's not what I'm asking, and you know that's not what I'm asking. Data provided by billboard companies needs to be made public.
There is data, other than location data, other than permit data, and other than inspection data, that I understand Building and Safety has. Nobody has asked for that data. That data may or may not be protected as a trade secret or private financial information. Our office, the City Attorney's Office, has taken the position that data is not protected, that that is public data, that data will not, is not something that should be properly considered a trade secret. If someone wants to release that data, you'd have to talk with someone else above me in my office.
I do, I want to release it now.
That would be a policy call by the city council if they want to release that ad hoc, without, without a, without a court decision. But that will subject the city to potential liability in the event these billboard companies are damaged, and in the event that a court determines that that data should not have been released.
And here's where I disagree, because again, this is, I'm, I'm telling you, folks, I, I mean, I don't like when people evade my questions. Just tell me the straight answer. You're telling me that it has been made public because it hasn't been requested. I think the government needs to make it public and put it out there and not put the burden on the public to file FOIA's. I understand that things are FOIA-able. There's a difference between being FOIA-able and being public. So as far as I'm concerned, I've been told by the City Attorney's Office today that it has received data from billboard companies, that it has not made public, and that the city has not made public. That is a fact, correct?
That is a fact if it is subject to a motion, that's true.
No, no, Mr. Blau said that is a fact with respect to items that have not been made subject to motions, correct?
My understanding is there's a bunch of financial and related lease data that Building and Safety has that has not been posted on a website or turned over to...
That are not subject of motion.
I'm not aware that they're subject to motion.
Okay, so that's from Ms. Burge. That's not what you were saying, Ms. Burge.
You're right, you're right, I'm sorry. That was why I said we were mixing apples and oranges. There's information the City Attorney's Office has, and there's information that Building and Safety has. So I just wanted to make that distinction. We can't speak to what information Building and Safety has, you have them at the table. And you can ask them why they are or not making something public. It's not because of our office.
I'll, you know what? I just won't say what I...
Councilman, I understand what you're saying. You want all information to be public, and we will work to do that.
Jack, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. It's very, very disappointing.
Just a minute. Let's just do this. Let's put together a motion that directs the City Attorney to do what it is that you're seeking.
I'm, you know what, I'm going to withhold when I think about this right now. I'll just say, I am not going to do a motion because that's public data, and, and we've been getting it run around for a long time, very, very angry about it, very angry, very angry when people don't answer direct questions with the direct answers, especially mine. Very angry. Just leave it at that.
So what we'll do this is that I like to see, as Chair of this committee, public data, data from the companies that should be made public. And you, I'm expecting for the City Attorney to advise us what we can and can't do. But whatever information that does exist that comes from the billboards should be made public. And if it can't be made public, we want to know why. Is that pretty clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Building and Safety's position is anything, everything and everything is public record, everything which is honestly specifically directed by City Attorney's Office.
Okay, I'll just leave it at that, but that would be my motion. The data from the billboard companies should be made public. If it can't be made public, we want to know why. Okay? All right, I do have a couple of questions. In this report, did I gather that we do have a shortfall?
Yes.
Now, are there any recommendations on how to address that shortfall for us to fulfill our, our objective?
As you know, you know, these are projections. Adjustments could be made to the fees depending upon, once the program has been implemented. The shortfall is $11,594. It could be easily absorbed through savings elsewhere in, in the department.
So it won't inhibit us from continuing forward?
No, it's minimal.
See, I just want to make sure, I mean, there's a point in time at which I think we all have reasons why things didn't happen the way they should have. And I just want to make sure we emphasize to Building and Safety and the City Attorney's Office, give us the reasons why we can't do certain things to give us the ability to understand which policies we need to recommend to achieve our goals. And, and that's something very important, at least as this Chair of this committee. So when we asked why it hasn't been implemented, and we were told we didn't have staff, but we could have moved staff internally, permanent staff, to address it, that was an option that we did not exercise. There was a major breakdown of communication there.
Yes.
And that's something I'm hoping doesn't happen again. If we're not achieving our goals, tell us why and let us help you perform based on discretion we have as policymakers. That's where I'm hoping we could be from here on out.
Will be done.
Okay, so this shortfall is, is something that will not stop us from implementing this?
That is correct.
Directive, okay. In terms of total number of companies that are part of Group B, do we have a number for that?
Mr. Butraga.
Which have not settled with the city?
It is, I think the number is, could be over 10 because there's a lot of companies which have just a few billboards or private parties which have a few billboards. Do you have that number, Mr. Butraga? No, we do not. Like Mr. Adamant said, some of these companies are small, they only have a small number of billboards, and there's also individual owners that own their own billboards.
See, so publicly, I just want to make sure that on the public record, making it clear for the communities in Los Angeles to know that there's a Group B which consists of billboard companies that we have yet to settle with. It does not prevent them from reporting illegal billboards, it does not keep the Building and Safety personnel from inspecting these billboards, and that is our responsibility to the city to continue policing, if you will, how these signs, where their signs are located and, and what they consist of, correct?
Very much so, Councilmember. The enforcement of complaints continues. As a matter of fact, I've gone back, since 2002, there has been 7,845 complaints about, complaints about signs, and every one of them, we have gone out and done inspection, and if they were illegal, we issued orders on it and so on. The only thing which is in front of you, and the only thing which has been impacted by the lawsuits and litigation and the injunction, is the issue of the annual survey. The ongoing complaint-based course of enforcement for the billboards has gone on and has proceeded. Now, obviously, in order to do a adequate job with a billboard, it is needed to have that periodic inspection, and that's why we put this program in place.
Okay, so that includes digitized billboards, correct?
Correct. Correct. Every complaint that we get, we will go out there, we will do inspection, we will look through the file and take appropriate action regarding the complaint, and have done that.
Okay, so whoever's listening out on the airwaves now, whoever hears about this committee meeting, because I know folks are saying, "You had it 8:30 on Thursday so the public couldn't or wouldn't participate." That's not why we did it today at this time. We did it today at this time to get it into the council as soon as possible. This was the first opening we had in this committee process.
I thought you did it today at Haraswe.
I'm sorry?
I thought you did it today at Haraswe.
So, Raswe, oh, no, it's Thursday, not Saturday. But...
On that point, Councilmember, on behalf of the Department of Building and Safety, I want to thank you for scheduling this so promptly, and also appreciate other committee chairs, the scheduling this item, because the sooner we can get it through the committee and the council, the sooner we can implement it. And that is our collective goal, all of us at this time.
Okay, but I wanna amplify this one point. The community still should be in a place where they need to report illegal billboards, and Building and Safety will inspect them.
Yes.
And we will follow with enforcement. This is just about the citywide survey.
That's correct.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have other billboard issues that we're gonna move forward on based on how the courts treat these cases.
Yes.
Based on how proactive the council will be in addressing these issues.
Yes, sir.
Because I feel a motion coming out from Mr. Wise pretty soon.
Emotion.
Emotion, okay. Okay, well, then, we'll, I'll be at the edge of my seat then. But the bottom line is, I wanna make sure the survey gets done.
Yes, sir.
And we wanna make sure we understand what you need the department, so the council through Budget and Finance will understand what you need to perform.
Yes, sir.
The seven years of stop and go and everything else that's been happening is something we need to stop.
Yes, sir.
So that being said, do you have any other comments or questions? Okay, any comments or questions from the departments? Okay, we do have one speaker card, I understand. He did arrive. He managed to get through traffic. So, well, thank you again. And we'll ask Mr. Crabtree to step forward. And thank you, Joe. Thank you, folks. Please come on up. You can leave your seats and allow Mr. Crabtree to sit down. Please give us your name and address, sir.
Honorable members of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, it's my pleasure to speak with you today. My name is Bill Crabtree. I am the president of the Western Division for Van Wagner Outdoor. Again, we are not one of the outdoor companies in question here. On behalf of Van Wagner, I would like to share my support with each of you on the proposed off-site sign periodic inspection program. We do support that. This program and an inventory of existing signage will help the city more effectively manage signs and better enforce the current regulations. However, it's only the first step in the right direction. Currently, the Department of Building and Safety issues non-transferable sign permits to the outdoor advertising companies, which we'll refer to as the OAC, which has led to really a disjointed tracking and difficulty in determining compliance and an inability to effectively verify if a sign has proper permits or not. Also, since the permit is tied to the outdoor advertising company, landowners experience a loss of income. If the structure is removed, since the permit is lost, many of the landowners are sole proprietors and small businesses owners, and given hard economic times, this is really unfair. Competitive market further hurts them, which means that if a sign comes down, the property owner gets nothing, they can't rebuild, and the property owner cannot negotiate with another outdoor company to get a fair market value for that particular sign. I believe that the city of Los Angeles should take a land use-based approach and regulate off-site signs through its zoning and planning process. This is a model that works successfully in other cities such as San Francisco and West Hollywood.
Please finish. You can go ahead.
I'm sorry. Van Wagner acknowledges that off-site signs have been a hot-button issue in the communities throughout Los Angeles. We believe that in working together, a win-win solution can be found. A transparent permitting process will encourage a fair market, better tracking, enforcement, and help heal the city's woes. We are submitting a letter today, I just signed it, inter-record detailing our thoughts on the permitting system and look forward to being part of the discussion further. I would like to thank each of you for the time that you've given me. Again, we do back the situation, and we look forward to being a part of it and assist in making this process better.
Scrutcher, we appreciate your cooperation, and it's important to hear from the industry as well. And the fact you made the time to come in this morning does reflect that level of cooperation. So I thank you for your presence here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Just by way of background information, Counselman, we are gonna be having the department list all the different motions that have been generated since we came into office back in '01. And we're going to see which actions have been taken that meets the objectives of each motion, and we're going to identify which motions are left. And we're gonna be working with the City Attorney's Office and Building and Safety and the CAO to see what actions we can take to move these forward. So we're hoping by the time that we get to a place where we understand the level of support from the council for the department's performance duties, and hopefully we'll get some more breathing room, if you will, given the legal constraints and opportunities that can be created based on the work from the City Attorney's Office, hopefully we'll have reached more objectives. So that being said, I'd like to recommend that we move and approve the CAO recommendation and instruct the City Attorney to prepare the ordinance so we can move them on to the next set of committees. Second? Okay.
Counselman, what about the directive earlier about the data being public?
Right. And next, but that's the motion I wanna move forward, and I'd like to get a response from the department. If we can get a report back for next Plumb Committee to see how we can move that, I'd like to hear that report and then move from there.
Let me just, one second. Let me just make clear. I would be willing to move right now that the City Attorney's Office be directed to make public all data provided to the city by billboard companies. And so I'll do that for the record, and hopefully you'll second that. But here's the thing, and I say this to everyone in the room who's in the City Attorney's Office, the reason I'm reluctant to make that motion is, it shouldn't require a motion. That should already have been done. It should have been part of the law. Mr. Michelson, don't come forward. Don't come forward. What really, really, really made me mad today is, I asked direct questions, I didn't get direct answers. That's not acceptable under any circumstance, ever, from a lawyer.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we'll wait for that report back?
The report should be from the City Attorney's Office. As far as building and safety is concerned, all information is public.
I need to find that data. I need to see the data, so whatever, whoever has that data presented, would that be the City Attorney's Office, not my attorney?
Jerry Burge, City Attorney's Office. As I said before in answer to Mr. Wise's question, the City Attorney's Office takes the position that it is all public. I said that clearly. If you don't believe me, I can't, I don't know what to say about that or if you don't agree with me. But that is the position that we have taken, and we are taking that position. And unless there's a court order that prohibits us from giving that information, we are providing that information.
So let's do this. We can get a report back from the City Attorney, which is what data is available. You can put in whatever field, whatever, but as long as it's made public, we wanna know what you have.
We're happy to provide that information, Counselman.
Okay, that'd be great. All right. So that being said, anything else, Robert?
Public comment, Counsel.
Public comment?
Since you're on the motion, I wanna make sure we are clear. You mostly moved the CAO motion, CAO report. Also, I wanna make sure that contingent, along with that, you moved the building and safety motion, which is for the adoption of the ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
That includes adoption of the ordinance.
Just for the record.
Okay, so we took public comment cards. Anybody here for public comment? Say none. This meeting is adjourned.